The March 21st, 2025. Uh, the first, um, order of business is parole call.
Bruce Forrester?
Here.
Craig Burrow?
Here.
Luke Phelan?
Here.
Tim Crawford?
Here.
The second thing is the approval of the previous minutes, and there are none. Therefore, we'll move on to the motion to adjourn pursuant to the county board's vote, which they haven't done yet. Therefore, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Judge Slavin for, as a facilitator for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Having you, having already been honored by you appointing me, I'll just launch into some, into the process. I will note that in addition to the role taken, the presence of the court reporter and myself, IT, I see Merrill Reed, representative of the petitioners, and three representatives of the petitioners. I see Stephanie Sasser on, she said she was going to be on Zoom. Okay. If she shows up, would you alert me, Jonathan, please? I see one other interested party in the courtroom, and we have one other person on Zoom.
Two.
Two people on Zoom now. Okay. Thank you. Although we opened this hearing, last time we were here on, uh, May 1st, I did not launch into my usual, uh, process explanation, and always feel obliged to do so because I think it helps everyone. Um, welcome. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see all my Lee County friends once again. I hope everyone's healthy, remaining safe. My name is Tim Slavin, and I'm a retired circuit judge engaged as an independent contractor to what is called facilitate this hearing. I have no adjudicary responsibilities. I am not for or against any particular position. I am a neutral. I am here, however, hopefully, to add some process organization efficiency and flow to these proceedings. This is Pivot Energy IL, IL, 258 LLC, Pivot Energy IL 259 LLC, and Pivot Energy IL 260 LLC's petitions numbered 25P 1642, 1643, and 1644 for special use permits to develop a proposed solar energy system, the acronym of which is SES, in Nelson Township here in Lee County. If, for whatever reason, one chooses not to personally appear in the courtroom, through the good offices of the Lee County IT Department, you can attend virtually from your home, business, or other remote location on the Zoom video conferencing platform, or, while not being able to participate, you can at least watch and listen to us on YouTube. The Zoom meeting ID is and will remain throughout the proceeding as 915-3923-9154, and the password The Zoom platform allows an interested party to actually participate. It is interactive. One may not only see and hear what is taking place, but when the appropriate stage comes, one may ask a witness questions, call one's own witnesses, testify oneself, or give a closing comment or public statement. Further, in an attempt to try, try to be as transparent and inclusive as possible, we are also streaming this proceeding on YouTube. However, YouTube is not an interactive program. On it, one can only watch and hear what is being done and said during the hearing, but not participate in it. As to YouTube on your computer or cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL, IL for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. No need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. That should bring up a list of the Lee County ZBA Youtubes. You can input or select the date, uh, if you want tonight, of course, it'll be May 21st, and voila, you should be seeing us here in the hearing room in the old county courthouse. Uh, you should be advised that YouTube feed will have a short, real-time delay. Now, for a bit more substance, there are two general groups of attendees as this zoning board of appeals hearing moves forward. One bunch, excuse me, I refer to as necessaries. These are people who must, as a practical matter, attend this hearing in person. They consist of your hard-working and practically volunteer zoning board of appeals members. The same hard-working, uh, attribute applies to Ms. Alice Henkel, your county's outstanding zoning officer, your state's attorney or his assistant, your state's attorney Charlie Boonstra, or his assistant Stephanie Sasser, a Lee County IT tech, tonight, uh, his name is Jonathan, a witness himself, and finally, and hardly least, our hard-working and skilled court reporter Kelly. The other folks I will group into what I refer to as interested parties. These are those of you folks who are with us either personally or remotely on Zoom or YouTube because you simply want to observe your county government at work, or, beyond that, you have a particular interest in these proceedings. The next thing I will try to explain is the process for these interested parties to participate. I emphasize, please, please, know that everyone will have that opportunity, but similarly, for everyone's benefit, it will be provided in a manner that is both orderly and efficient. There are many possible reasons for an interested party's appearance this evening and during subsequent sessions, whether in person or digitally. You could be a member of the public who is joining us simply as a citizen and spectator. You could be a member of the public who wants to be heard. This does not necessarily mean someone who is absolutely for or against the requested special use, uses, but someone who wants to participate. If you are such a person, you will fall into any one or more three subcategories. One, you want to offer testimony. This means that you desire, under oath, to have you or a witness of your calling testify, or both, to testify to facts relevant to the board's eventual decision, such as not the time to describe your feelings or announce your opinion, but to aver facts, and you are subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to testify will be given one opportunity to do so. Two, you want to, you want to be able to cross-examine witnesses, but please, that is just to ask questions of a particular witness, not to argue with him or her, and not, or not to tell him or her things. Everyone, excuse me, wishing to cross-examine will be given one opportunity to cross-examine each and every witness. Or third, you want to make a closing statement or a public comment. That is your opportunity to give a speech, to tell the board how you feel or give them your, your opinion based on the facts you've heard during the whole hearing process as to what their decision should be. During this closing statement or speech stage, one cannot allege new facts. When, when you think about it, the reason for this is simple. The two most important parts of adducing the truth or accuracy of matters at a hearing are then missing. You are not under oath and not subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to give a closing statement will be given one opportunity for, to do so. For those of you joining us on the Zoom platform this evening or in the future, that interactive software allows an interested party to indicate a desire, when the time comes, to ask questions of witness, to present one's open witness, to testify oneself, or to give a closing statement or public comment. So, when I indicate that the time has come to begin one of those interested party stages, I will ask for participation from the Zoomers. If one is video conferencing, uh, simply click on the icon at the bottom center of the Zoom screen labeled Participants, and from the options that then appear, click Raise Hand. We should see the, that raised hand here in, here at our end. If one is remotely teleconferencing, in other words, not using video, while remaining connected, hit the star or asterisk symbol on your, probably, cellphone, and then the Arabic numeral number nine on your phone. We should also then see any raised hands under that option as well. However, I won't be able to call on folks on a firsthand, first-raised basis, so calling on raised hands will probably be randomly referring by name, email address, or the last four digits of a phone number that appears on our display. Written communications sent in advance of this hearing, or any written material intended as something for the board to consider, is subject to Board Rule 512 that eight copies be provided. Any communications received that do not comply with this requirement may not be considered by the board. I will now review the chronological progress of the hearing. I know that the narration that follows is really boring and really tedious, but please, reciting it is for everyone, to help you feel comfortable and not worry that you will not have a fair and complete opportunity to participate, but at the same time, to alert you when the three distinct opportunity forms of participation will be presented. The Illinois statute governing this proceeding refers to it as a hearing. It does not call it a meeting or a discussion. It is a hearing. So does run much more like a courtroom than a group debate. The applicant has the burden of initially going forward. Accordingly, its agent or attorney may first make any opening remarks they may, he or she may so desire. Then, to set the stage, Ms. Henkel will be asked to take the witness stand first to, um, and I will place her under oath or affirmation. Following her direct testimony, the state's attorney, members of the ZBA first, and then petitioners and interested parties, both onsite and remote, will have the opportunity to cross-examine. And please, I keep saying this because it's important, this is just the time only for questions directed to her. After that, the applicant presents evidence, one witness or document at a time. I will place each witness under oath or affirmation. At the conclusion of each applicant's witness's direct testimony, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, will have the opportunity to cross-examine. And again, please, that is time for questions only. After the zoning officer and applicant have presented their respective evidentiary matters, then interested parties may present evidence, one witness, including themselves, or document at a time. I will place each such witness under oath or affirmation. After each interested party witness, the applicant, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties have the opportunity to cross-examine. Then the applicant may offer rebuttal witnesses or documents one at a time. I will place each such witness under oath and affirmation, and the same questioning process ensues. If the applicant does present rebuttal witnesses, interested parties may present sub-rebuttal witnesses one at a time, and around the horn we go again. If, however, the applicant does not present any rebuttal evidence, interested parties are not in a position to present any further witnesses. Finally, the applicant is given the initial opportunity for closing remarks, and then any interested parties will be given the opportunity for the same, closing statements, public comments, or speeches, whatever term you prefer. That is the phase during which parties may sum up the evidence that has been heard during the evidentiary stage, and based on those things, tell the zoning board what one thinks has or has not been proven, and how one feels, and what one thinks the ZBA ought to do. All of this is simply a process designed to give all a chance to be heard in a thorough but methodical fashion. There are some minor sub-rules, after which I promise I will be finished boring you further. Each session has a time limit under the zoning board's rules of two and one-half hours. However, we certainly don't want to cut off anybody right in the middle of something, so I will certainly make a reasonable effort to let one finish a particular stage when the time limit has been reached, or, if there is very little time remaining at the end of a stage, I may simply continue the session rather than starting on another phase. I also have, for everyone's benefit, the discretion to call for short recesses throughout the process. Under the zoning board's rules, I have the duty to rule on the admissibility of evidence. While the strict judicial rules of evidence do not apply, I will exercise some equitable control of what is being presented, with or without an objection. We do, and we will continue to have, a court reporter taking down what is said during the proceedings. I ask all to be mindful of her job. She is very skillful, but she cannot take down two people talking at once. She can't take down nodding heads or gestures, and there is a limit to how fast a person can talk, including me, and expect her to keep up. I do ask for civility and decorum. This is certainly a public forum, but please be respectful of all who considered important enough to be here. I ask to refrain from displays of approval or disapproval, and as now with all public gatherings, I request that you either turn your cellphones off, or at least put them on silent. Lastly, your zoning board of appeals, these fine, hard-working, and practically volunteer gentlemen, act as finders of fact, fact, much akin to a jury in a jury trial. It is their role, that, in that role, their decisions during the last stage of the proceeding, findings of fact, and making recommendations are based on the relevant provisions of the Lee County ordinance in light of the sworn testimony, admitted exhibits, and closing statements they received during the hearing process. They are your friends. They're your neighbors and fellow citizens of Lee County, so please, appreciate and respect their role as we move through the days and weeks ahead. I ask you not to put them in compromised positions by lobbying them or having extra hearing conversations or correspondence until the entire hearing, including their decisions, has been completed. In fact, they are instructed to avoid these appearances of impropriety by politely telling an interested party something like, "I'm sorry, but I'm not allowed to discuss the matter until the ZBA's work of finding of facts and making recommendations is completed." Thank you all for your kind understanding in these regards, and we shall begin. Ms. Reed, would you like to give any opening comment, or, no requirement, but if you would, that's fine, otherwise, call your, no, just any, any opening statement, introductions. That's up to you. But you do need, you need, do need to take your microphone along, otherwise the Zoom feed does not, it'll, it travels. Yep, till it turns green.
Thank you. Uh, hello, my name is Merrill Reed. I'm a senior manager of development at Pivot Energy, and I appreciate the time that you've all committed to be here tonight, um, in subsequent hearings, uh, so looking forward to tell you more about our project when I take the stand for my testimony, but thank you all for coming.
Okay, great. And would you like to take the stand, no, we're gonna have Alice first. Ms. Henkel, wanna step up and raise your right hand, please? Psalmy swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. And I hope you get started. State your name and your occupation, please.
Uh, excuse me, Alice Henkel, uh, Lee County zoning administrator.
And very briefly, uh, just, would you care to explain the duties of your office?
Um, enforcing the zoning ordinance, um, of the Lee County ordinance, uh, which includes hearing zoning petitions, um, issuing building permits.
And in that capacity, you keep records, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, with regard to the petitions for special use at issue here, um, um, who filed those petitions, and on what date did they file those petitions?
Um, the, the three petitions, the first petition was filed by Pivot Energy IL 258 LLC on April 3rd, 2025. The second one was filed, and that was for, I'm sorry, petition number 25P 1642 was filed by Pivot Energy IL 258 LLC on April 3rd. Petition number 25P 1643 was filed by Pivot Energy IL 259 LLC on April 3rd, 2025. And petition number 25P 1644 was filed by Pivot Energy IL 260 LLC on April 3rd, 2025.
And how many copies of each of those petitions did they file?
Just the original.
Okay. Did they submit an electronic, electronic copy?
Yes, it was submitted to me electronically.
And you have copies of those petitions, is that correct?
Yes.
Any of you marked them?
Yes.
And what have you marked them in?
ZO number one.
Okay. What notice was given of the filing of those petitions and of the date of this hearing, if you know?
Uh, publication, or, notice was made by publication in the newspaper, by certified mail to the property owners immediately adjacent to the petition parcel, by posting notice at the parcels, by posting the agenda to the county board's website, and by posting the agenda to the bulletin board outside of the county board's, board chair's office.
Do, do you, uh, know the, the date on which the notice was posted at the site?
Yes.
And what was that?
That was posted on April 14th, 2025.
How about on the Lee County website?
April 21st, 2025.
And how about on the chairman's bulletin board, as you call it?
Also April 21st, 2025.
If you know, let's see, yeah, if you know, on, on what date was the, was the notice published in, in any, a newspaper?
On April 12th, 2025.
And what newspaper?
Dixon Telegraph.
You have certificates of publication from the newspaper as required by the Civil Code?
Yes.
And do you have those marked?
Yes.
Okay. And what are they marked?
ZO number three.
Okay.
ZO number two was the, okay.
I haven't got, yeah, but, okay, besides those things, did they file anything else? Let's go there.
Yes, the hearing application.
And they are, and they consist of what?
Uh, three separate, uh, spiral-bound, um, packets.
Okay. One for each petition?
One for each petition, and I did receive 12 hard copies of each hearing application for each petition, in addition to an electronic copy.
Thank you. Um, with regard to, uh, and you've marked those applications?
Yes.
And what, have you marked those?
ZO number two.
With regard to the notices of public hearing, have you marked those, a copy of those notice, notices?
Yes, ZO number four.
And to your knowledge, those are the notices that were reflected in the certificate of publication, is that correct?
Yes.
If you know, were those notices mailed, um, to adjacent property owners?
Yes.
By what, you, by, um, excuse me, USPS mail?
Certified.
Certified. And you have a list of, um, those mail receipts? Guess I better take that one at a time. That list, have you marked that?
Yes.
Okay, what's that marked?
ZO number eight.
And with regard to the return receipts, uh, do you have copies of those return receipts?
Yes, those are ZO number seven.
Okay. And, uh, you also have an exhibit number six, what is it? An agenda?
That is a copy of the agenda for the May 1st hearing, um, that was posted to the county's website and to the chairman's bulletin board.
Showing that this, uh, these petitions were initial, the opening hearing was on that, on May 1st, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. With regard to the, the notices posted at the site, um, what evidence do you have that they were posted there?
I have photos of the signs that were posted at the property.
And you marked those what?
ZO number five.
Do you have any other exhibits you wish to?
Uh, yes. Um, two letters of support, um, were submitted to my office by the petitioner. Um, one is from the owner of the project parcels, Albert Newcomer. The second one is from Higher 360 regarding a donation made by Pivot Energy.
What do you mark, have you marked those?
ZO number nine.
All right. Were copies of the notice sent to any other persons other than adjacent, uh, property owners?
Yes.
Or, yeah, to whom?
District One County Board members, the Lee County Health Department, the Lee County Engineer and Highway Supervisor, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District, Paul Meyer, or, I'm sorry, um, Nelson Township Supervisor, Nelson Township Highway Commissioner, and to the City of Dixon as they are a municipal, or to the City of Dixon's Planning Commission as they are a municipality with a planning commission within 1.5 miles of the proposed
If you know, was a community meeting held?
Yes.
Were you present?
No.
Okay. I'll leave that for you. Did the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District make a report on the ground on which this proposed, these proposed projects would lay?
Yes.
And do you have a copy of that?
They are a part of their hearing application.
Thank you. Um, are you familiar with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
Yes.
And being familiar with that, did the Lee, first of all, did the Lee County Planning Board consider the proposed projects at any one or more of their meetings?
No.
What is your opinion about what, if anything, this proposed development is contrary or in concert with the objectives of that plan?
Pursuant to Public Act 102-1123, which was signed into law on January 27, 2023, the state has essentially deemed that solar energy systems can be placed on any land on which agricultural uses take place. Therefore, the proposed development is consistent with the objective, objectives and goals set forth in the Lee County Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, we have a court reporter, as you know, um, taking down the proceedings as we move along. Once she transcribes and reviews her work for accuracy sometime after each session, and then provides a transcript of the same to you, what will you do with, what do you intend to do with that?
They will be posted to the Lee County website.
Are there any other documents you have in file as part of your duties that you want to make part of the record here?
Not at this time.
Anything else you wanna, I've been asking all the questions, anything else you want to say?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, questions of this witness, is Stephanie on? Okay. Board members, uh, Mr. Forrester?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
No.
Mr. Phelan?
None.
Mr. Crawford?
No.
Ms. Reed? Um, any other interested parties, sir? How about on Zoom, anybody have any questions? And Ms. Henkel, hit that, hit that button, raise hand, and we'll try and see you. Give you a few seconds here to find it. Anybody raise hand, Jonathan? Okay, thanks very much. All right, we'll move to you petitioners. Ms. Reed, you wanna call your first witness? Which looks like it's going to be you. Do you Psalmy swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth? Have a seat. I will help you get started once you get settled. All right, state your name, please. And for, we'll only ask once, but, um, spell it for the court reporter, please.
I L L, last name Reed, R E A D.
And what's your business or occupation?
I am the senior manager of project development at Pivot Energy.
Let's talk about your duties, first of all. In that capacity, what are your general levers, not all of them? In that capacity, what are your general leav, not all of them, but just generally, what are your duties?
So we have a land team that will sign a lease, and at that point, it is transferred over to me. So I work with a project for a two to five year development period to do all due diligence, working with local agencies in Illinois to make sure we have all of the right precedents to come in front of you with a permit eventually, and make sure there's no concerns about the project. And then eventually go into permitting and working through interconnection with the various utilities in Illinois. And once we have received all of our permits and our interconnections is when I would pass it off to the construction team at Pivot.
And tell us about Pivot Energy. Where's that company headquartered?
Denver, Colorado.
And how long has Pivot been in the business of developing solar, commercial solar systems?
Just over 15 years, founded in 2009.
Founded in 2009, huh?
Yes.
And what is the relationship of, excuse me? There's a relationship between the petitioners, all titled petitioner, or Pivot Energy IL, and then 258, 9, and 60. What's the relationship of those entities to Pivot Energy?
So all three LLCs are owned by Pivot Energy, so we'll develop them, own and operate them through the life of the projects.
So, so Pivot Energy wholly owns each one of those entities?
Correct.
You said that you would develop, operate, develop, own and operate them throughout the life, is that correct?
Correct.
In general terms, how many, how many commercial energy systems does Pivot Energy own entities that own commercial energy systems?
So across corporate systems that are on their rooftops or on carports, all the way to the ground mount project that I'm proposing today, we have around 1,000 projects across the nation.
Okay. Very good. That'll lay some groundwork, why don't you take it from there? I'm sure you've got a number of things you want to testify about, so take it from there.
Great, thank you. And I'll put up the PowerPoint presentation if possible, thank you.
By the way, before you get there, do you have a hard copy of that?
Yes, it's in the packet that I gave to you as petition, it's pet number five, or four, pet number four.
For those of us with our back turned to the screen, it's a lot easier to follow along, okay.
And I'll let everyone get situated. Great, I'll get started. As I mentioned, my name is Merrill Reed, I'm a senior developer, senior manager of development at Pivot Energy. I have been in the solar industry for six years, I started in environmental consulting, specializing in solar development consultation, and have been with Pivot Energy for three years, working throughout Illinois on ground mount systems throughout the state. And now I'll tell you a little bit more about Pivot Energy and the projects I'm proposing today. Next slide, please. Pivot Energy is an independent power producer, also known as a national solar producer, founded in 2009 in St. Louis, Missouri. Our headquarters is now in Denver, Colorado. Our focus areas are in community solar, which is what I'm proposing today, but we also specialize in corporate off-site solutions, corporate onsite solar, purpose-driven solar development, and asset management and operations and maintenance. We have 3.5 gigawatt, gigawatts of development, either built, awarded, or in development, over 1,000 projects developed, and over 650 clients across the US. So the picture you're seeing here, the, all the blue states are areas that we have projects located in, and the stars represent Pivot offices across the country. Next slide, please. Pivot is the long-term owner and operator of these systems, so we'll be with the project through the life, 20 to 40 years, depending on how long the life will go, with a maximum of 40 years. And I mentioned that we're the national leader in small-scale solar projects across the country. We're also a certified B corporation, of which there are only about 1,000 in the US. This means that we meet the highest environmental performance standards, public transparency, and legal accountability. We're a dedicated community member, our community investment program donations is something that we do for all of our projects. We do $5,000 of donation per megawatt for each of our systems that we propose. In 2024, we donated just under $400,000 to different agencies and local nonprofits to where our projects are located. And this project will, these projects will further that commitment to local investment in Lee County. Next slide, please. Talk a little bit about why community solar in Illinois. The Illinois Renewable Portfolio Standard, the RPS, has a goal to achieve 50% renewable energy generation by 2035. In September of 2021, the Clean Energy Jobs Act, also known as SEJA, implemented the RPS with a goal of expanding the program and focusing on long-term job growth throughout the state of Illinois. Solar access is for everyone, however, it's not always easy to put it on your own roof or to have it in your backyard, maybe you don't have the space, or say you want your business, but you don't have the right roof or backyard for it. So this is a great way that people can get involved in renewable energy without having to have it and host it on their own sites. So not, not as accessible when it's your own property and you're not able to do that. So community solar is a perfect combination. It benefits the community while also bolstering the utility's distribution grid and meeting these RPS goals. You can be a local municipality, business, school, or resident, as long as you're in Illinois and on commed lines, you can subscribe to these projects and save money on your utility bills. And there's no upfront cost to subscribe. From month to month, you'll pay for your kilowatt hours produced, your portion of the community solar farm, and save money at the first month of production. Next slide, please. Now I'll get more into project specifics. So these three projects are Pivot Energy IL 258 LLC, Pivot Energy IL 259 LLC, and Pivot Energy IL 260 LLC, of which I'll shorten to say IL 258, IL 259, and IL 260, just to keep it shortened. All three projects are located on two parcels owned by newcomer partners. It's on agriculturally zoned land. The three projects, IL 258 occupies 17.5 acres, IL 259 occupies 18, and IL 260 also occupies 18 in our proposed plans. The setbacks that we've proposed are in compliance with the Lee County ordinance. We're proposing 50 feet from Rock Island Road to the north, 50 feet from all other property boundaries, as well as 150 feet from all residences. And the nearest, nearest home is 170 feet away, it's that home in the southwest corner, you can see the, the 150-foot buffer shown on the plans. Our fencing is an eight-foot agricultural-style game fence. We find that blends in better with the agricultural community that it's surrounding the project rather than a chain link fence. And we're proposing a minimum 16-wide gravel access road. On our site plans, we show our 20-foot, that's usually suitable to have larger trucks come into the site. And I've broken out what the three projects look like in terms of what they'll generate for energy. So IL 258 is a 3.5-megawatt AC system that'll generate around 7.5, 4 gigawatt hours per year, which would power approximately 1,100 homes. And that's the northwest array shown first up here. IL 259 is a 4.48-megawatt AC system, generating approximately 10.6 gigawatt hours per year, which is approximately 1,500 homes, the average home, I should say. And IL 260 is a 3.75-megawatt AC system, generating approximately 7.9 gigawatt hours per year, which is approximately 1,200 homes. We're also proposing screening along the western boundary of all of the arrays, so you can see the bottom arrow there is pointing to that long proposed screening, as well as to the northeast portions of the array, so next to the western portion of the access road, on the right side of the IL 258, as well as to the northeastern portion of IL 260, which is the northeastern project. And the southern one, to reiterate, is IL 259. The project will not require any utilities, it does not require sewer, waste, irrigation, potable water services, trash, or recycling services, or natural gas. Interconnection is directly to the north on the lines that exist along Rock Island Road. Next page, please. I've put in snippets of our site plans to zoom in a little bit on each of those projects. So this one right here is IL 258, that northwestern array, and they're all accessed by the same proposed access road, so not three entrances, just one. Next slide, please. The southern array is IL 259. Next slide, please. And the northeastern array is IL 260. Next slide, please. I'll tell you about the technology and equipment that we're proposing for the site. So the modules are Tier One panel manufacturers made in the USA, and they're coated with non-reflective technology to absorb sunlight. Our inverters are small string inverters, not large centralized inverter, inverters that are located throughout the arrays. Illinois 258 and 260 have 125 KVA inverters from CPS, and IL 259 has 166 KVA inverters from Solictira. The racking is single-axis tracker, so the, the panels will follow the sun from east to west throughout the day to maximize their efficiency. And they're driven pile foundations directly into the soil, so no concrete footing is necessary. And as I mentioned, the point of interconnection is located along Rock Island Road, right north of the project. Next slide, please. Of the three projects, one of them is proposing battery storage, so IL 258 and 260 are solar only, but IL 259 is solar plus battery storage. I'll tell you a little about what we're proposing on site. Our batteries are lithium-ion phosphate batteries, and for this project, it would use around two to five battery cabinets that I've put in that picture at the top, that's what a cabinet looks like, or one container, which is the, the bottom picture of what a container looks like. So one of those two will be used. SYL are the battery packs used, and if we go with the containers, the containers are 20 to 40 feet in length, depending on how large we need it to be for the battery storage, and six to eight feet in width, and will be located on a concrete pad. The benefits of battery storage, I'll tell you a little about those, the batteries will store excess solar energy during the day, and it will be available to the consumers when it is most needed, thus reducing the electricity cost. Energy to be used at peak hours, which is usually at nighttime, when people are back home, have their lights on, maybe using AC, is usually the peak hours, and it can be dispatched during this time when it's most needed. It also adds reliability to the grid, allowing for more energy at peak hours, and can allow for 20-plus hours of solar generation. So once the sun goes down, we can still have energy from the project being produced and put on the grid. Next slide, please. In pet number three, that should be either in front of you or in your packets, we've submitted a memo for our solar analysis for glare. So we consulted with Forge Solar, which is an industry standard for simulating and modeling glare analyses on projects. We found that it would have zero glare produced with our non-reflective technology, as well as textured panels to absorb sunlight. And as I mentioned, zero glare to neighboring residences or roadways. You can see in the little picture that's included, all of the different houses, as well as the new nearby streets are what we put as observation points to make sure that we weren't sending glare of sorts. So that's how they run the analysis. Next page, please. Beneath our projects, we propose native vegetation and pollinator-friendly habitat. Local vegetation and pollinating-friendly habitat is aesthetically pleasing, it also aids in creating habitat for local pollinator species, such as bees, butterflies, wasps, flies, beetles, all needed for different parts of agriculture and for healthy ecosystems. Their low growth and native vegetation chooses, chosen to reduce frequency of mowing, so that they won't grow above the panels, as we don't want to lose efficiency, or also have it be unseemly to look at. These are very good grasses to allow on site for site resilience to droughts and intense downpours, of which we're prone to here in Illinois. And they have root, deep root systems that are more efficient than turf grass at absorbing runoff. In this picture here, to the right, you can see the different deep root systems that can be between four to eight feet in depth, which is, you'll hear a little bit more about today for our stormwater. Next slide, please. Here's some examples of some native vegetation on site at a few of our sites. Next slide, please. In addition, we're also proposing a dual use of sheep grazing on site. So we're at Pivot 100% committed to a dual-use portfolio, and this can include crop production between arrays, of which we're doing in a couple of counties here in Illinois, sheep grazing, beekeeping, and/or pollinator habitats. This boosts, this boosts local agriculture and provides new income for landowners and farmers, strengthening the local agricultural economy. It enhances growing conditions, the shade from the panels conserves water, reduces soil erosion, enhances crop growth, and supports diverse crop and livestock. Preserves farmland, land remains viable for future agriculture after decommissioning, unlike permanent developments. So as I mentioned, this is a project that will be here for 20 to 40 years, and will be decommissioned at the end of its life cycle. Thomas Bach, our civil engineer, third party from HBK Engineering, is here to testify tonight to tell you a little bit about stormwater as well as decommissioning. So we'll go to him next for some of those more, more of those questions. The soil and water health benefits, sheep grazing enriches the soil by embedding seeds and naturally fertilizing, improving land and water quality over time. And we're committed to agricultural innovation, so research partnerships and universities, with universities, and working with the USDA to maximize agricultural value. Next slide, please. I mentioned a lot of this over here to the left, but I think what's important is local farms and allowing for local shepherds to expand their flock. One of our sheep grazers in Illinois, she told me that she's been able to triple the size of her flock due to staffing some of these projects in her own neighborhood. A couple of the pictures I provided here, first the top right picture is a, the shepherd's son at one of our pivot sites in Colorado. I like to emphasize that he is a child and not a full-grown man for size, as well as a project in Sandoval on the bottom there in Illinois. Next slide, please. I wanted to highlight a excerpt from the support letter that Albert Newcomer submitted for the project, as he couldn't be here tonight. I'll read that quote now. "My family has owned this property for the past 45 years. Chris Herwig, the farmer of, of the property for the last 28 years, has grown crops here for a long time, and now we're thinking ahead about what's best for both my family, our tenant farmer, and the land itself. We first started talking with Pivot Energy about the idea of building a solar farm here after finding out that our property checks all the right boxes. It's flat, dry, clear, close to a substation, and has the necessary utility setup. Chris, as the tenant farmer and I, are splitting the proceeds 50/50 of the lease we have with Pivot." Albert Newcomer. Next slide, please. The community benefits that I mentioned earlier, I wanted to highlight as well. In March of 2025, we held a community meeting at the Loveland Community House, where we invited all neighbors within 1,000 feet of the parcel boundaries to come learn about the solar project and solar in general. We had about six groups of people, so two couples, and then the rest were single individuals, come to the project and learn more. We have five pending good neighbor agreements, which is what we call our tree screening stipends that we would offer to neighbors that would want to add additional tree screening to their own property in addition to the screening we have. There's already screening onsite, existing screening, to the west and to the northeast. But again, we're proposing additional screening. So this would be to further that benefit of screening. As part of our investment with our local community, we would want to invest in local organizations and potential partnerships. So as I mentioned, we do a $5,000 per megawatt donation. And that's for these projects, $58,750 towards a couple of things. We have three main pillars. This could be agricultural preservation, energy affordability and autonomy, so reducing energy burden and helping folks pay their utility bills, and economic development and workforce pathways. So we're always looking for groups that fit this. I listed a couple of examples as local 4-H clubs, lie-heat funds, local community colleges, or sustainable agriculture research and education programs, of which I found in the comprehensive plan. So we've been researching that with Sauk Valley Community College. Next slide, please. There's also a benefit in property tax increase that will come from these projects. I've broken it out into two different categories. So this first one over to the left shows the current property taxes from 2023. In one year, it's around $2,500. In the first year of the project, that would increase significantly to $59,000 from year one alone. And we've broken it out into what 20 years would look like. From a $50,000, just under $52,000 without the projects, and with the projects, it would increase to $725,000 over the 20-year lifecycle. That is over a 2,000% increase on property taxes in year one alone. And I've also broken it out with the existing tax districts. So one to point out would be Dixon PSD-170. In 2023, had $1,700 in taxes. And for these proposed projects in year one, it's estimated that we would provide just under $41,000 to that taxing body. Next slide, please. To recap, I'll break it into three different highlights. First, environmental. The land stewardship practices onsite will conserve water and improve soil health. It's an alternative energy source supporting energy independence in the area. Stabilizes local grid, reduces reliance on a single source of electricity, and distributed solar keeps power local. As far as economic benefits, Pivot partners with farmers, shepherds, and local land use experts to appropriately maintain the property. It provides affordable energy options to local subscribers. Provides long-term economic tax contributions to schools, first responders, and to infrastructure. That 20-year number I've listed again is $725,000. Our community investment fund to support local priorities. And again, we're always looking for different recommendation of what's important to the city of Dixon and to Lee County. And workforce development opportunities for growing industry. Lastly, it's also educational as a growing industry. Collaborations with educational institutions to advance dual-use solar, of which we're committed to. Community site tours for local schools and organizations, and promote awareness of the growing industry. And that is what I've prepared for my testimony. I'm happy to answer questions and cross-examination.
All right, Ms. Heckel, any questions?
You spoke on the dual use of the property. What crops are typically grown in that?
Yeah, so we're not proposing that on this site because you have to have an interested local farmer who wants to pursue that. So on this project, we're doing sheep grazing as our dual-use component with the pollinator-friendly habitat. But are you asking in general?
In general.
Yeah, we're doing hay and alfalfa in a project in Bureau County. So we increased the row spacing and are able to get a small tractor in there to farm between the array rows.
And also, you referenced the pending good neighbor agreements. Are these different than the visual screening options that is required under our ordinance?
They're the same.
They are the same. Okay, thank you. That is all.
All right, ZBAA members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Foster? No questions at this stage. Mr. Broom?
Yes, I've got a couple. What's your total investment for this project, do you think, roughly?
In terms of how much it costs to build or what we've spent to date?
No, total, what it costs by the time you get it operating?
I would have to verify that number because I'm on a construction or procurement team.
Okay. These panels double, will they collect energy on both sides of the panels?
Correct.
Okay. Do your batteries have a containment system?
Yes, they do.
Is that in the container or is that the cement containment?
So the container, there's two options that I kind of listed out. Either the container, which is kind of a shipping container, or the cabinets. So both would do the same thing for containment.
Okay. And then with the, you've had some experience with the sheep grazing?
Yes.
Do you still have to mow or spray weeds for those usually or not?
So usually, for establishment at the beginning of the project lifecycle, we'll probably have to go in and mow to let the seeds establish because the sheep will really eat it all if we don't let it establish. So we let it establish usually one to two years, depending on how long it takes to have good establishment for the seeds. And then that's when we bring in the sheep. So we might have a mow come around the outside of the project fence to keep that clear vegetation because we just do the grazing within the array fence lines. So that might be when we do mowing.
Has your sheep people, have they looked into parceling that up so they can graze one area and move to another?
Correct, that is how they do it.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vailen?
Just one question. Could you explain why is it that there are three different LLCs within the same boundary?
Yes, so because of the Illinois statute, they only allow five megawatts for a community solar project. And so because of the way that it's shaped, there's kind of that drainage swale in the center that we wanted to avoid. We broke it out into three projects to better fit, but then also we can't go above the five-megawatt cap. At that point, it becomes a utility solar project, of which there are no subscribers.
Thank you.
Crawford?
Yes, so your screening, obviously you got it on the west side. I guess the question is, is why can't you continue that along Rock Island?
We didn't think it was necessary, as there's no neighbors across the street. So we just didn't add it initially, but that is something we could consider if that helps.
I think you're going to have a few other people. I've heard some feedback.
Well, it's just ask questions.
Okay.
Any other questions? Interested parties here in the courtroom? How about on Zoom? I'll give you a few seconds to hit the raise hand. You tell me if somebody raised their hand, would you, Jonathan? Please. Well, I have lots, so we're going to launch in. When you talked about community solar and the savings people can have by subscribing, what is Pivot Energy's percentage save credit they give on electric bill?
20%.
And for the folks who are uninitiated, can you explain generally how that process works?
Yes, so you subscribe to the project and it's kind of like theoretically you get a portion of that project. And no one, one individual or group can have more than 40% of subscribing to one project. So how it works is you'll get a credit on your utility bill, so it'll be less than the normal rate from COMED. So you'll see that come in. And then there's also a pivot bill showing that tax credit that is applied from being subscribed to the project, which shows the savings as well as the remainder that you pay back, which is less than 20% of the total of all of the electricity used.
Am I correct that the 20% credit you're giving is on the very high end of what community solars are giving?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood. At first, I thought you said that the grazing, it's not going to make any difference. I just want to be accurate. First, you said goats were going to graze, and then sheep, which is it?
Oh, it's sheep. Sorry if I misspoke.
I apologize. All right, let's go to glare. You submitted an exhibit that you call, well, you called a petition number three. It's not really petition, petitioner's number three. And it comes, you testified that we determined there was no glare going to occur. It's not we, is it? Is it Forge Solar determined then?
Correct.
Who is Forge Solar?
Forge Solar is an industry-leading simulation that's online. They do modeling and simulation for glare analysis across the industry.
So is there a person, a human being, of which you're aware, that prepared this report? Or is it all online input?
Online. You put in your project specifications and it runs the analysis.
So it's a third-party software, but no engineering, is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, other than developing the software, obviously. With regard to that inputting, there is a, you talked about the observation points, but then on page, and that analysis takes into account four proposed new tree lines, is that correct? That are not existing at the present time.
It has the proposed tree screening as well as the existing.
Four proposed tree screenings, right?
Three proposed tree screenings and two existing.
Two existing, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. On page six out of seven, there's a chart showing the observation points. At the bottom, it says, it's got two lines. Route Atkinson Road and Route Rock Island Road. Were there observation points on those roads? I mean, what does, I guess a better question is, what does Route Atkinson Road and Route Rock Island Road mean in terms of analyzing glare?
So they will analyze it in their model from either observation points, which would usually be a house or a nearby residence, or anything else, if there's a nearby state park that you wanted to put a certain mountaintop point. You could do that as well. But the routes are the streets that are nearby. And Atkinson Road and Rock Island Road are the two adjacent roads. So they're highlighted in blue on the photo.
No, I understand that. So they took what? And I'm not trying to be smart, but millimeter observation points all along Atkinson Road and Rock Island Road?
I would not know how they run the model in that sense. But we do draw.
I'm trying to ask, what meaning does determining there's no glare on Atkinson or Rock Island Road have? I mean, how did they determine that?
We place a line along the road. And so wherever the line is, I guess they'll take it along that entire line. So I would assume that it is what you're.
Points all along a line of that road?
Correct.
Is that, okay, thank you. All right. If you know, what's the maximum degree of the tilt of the panels?
52 is what is most common, but they can go to 60.
It can go up to 60?
Mm-hmm.
You indicate in your applications and in your testimony that the racking would be, that the support for the racking would be pile-driven. How deeply would they be driven?
Between eight to 12 feet.
Tonight, you said they, no, I'm sorry. At one point in your applications, you noted that the foundations for those pile-driven, that the pile-driven foundations would be determined by geotechnical review and soil boring. But then you said, I think tonight they would not be, need to be in cement. Which is it?
Both are true. So we will do a geotechnical report, and that's to tell how deep the posts need to be.
Just to determine how deep, okay.
Correct, but then concrete footing is also not required.
Thank you. The substation where the, from where the point of interconnection will, to where the point of interconnection would lead, where is the substation, if you know?
Yes, so on this board I have here, and I don't know if IT wants to go to the slide with the first site plan, just for those online. Yep, that one. So in the vicinity map that you see up in the northwest corner, that shows the existing infrastructure from COMED. That is the line that travels up to the substation here in the city of Dixon. But that is not our project, we're not putting in the post for that whole run that's existing. Our interconnection point on the site plan is right across the road.
I understand that you testified to that. Where is the substation?
Right there on the river in city of Dixon, at the endpoint of that line.
Thank you. Does the site plan show the beginning of the cabling to that substation?
Yes.
Okay. And how does it show it?
So that's in the vicinity map, showing from the point of interconnection to the substation in that box up there. And then the POI, the point of interconnection, is shown on the north side of Rock Island Road on the existing COMED infrastructure.
Thank you. Anywhere in your application, is there anywhere in your application or that you can testify tonight that shows the project phasing and construction timeline plans?
I believe I wrote it in the application.
And where is that?
Let me open the page.
Sure.
Trying to remember where I put it. Did you say I could testify it too? Sure, sure. Okay, that might be easier than trying to find it. So pending permitting and finalization of interconnection with COMED, we would anticipate construction to be in the fall of 2026 at the earliest. Construction generally would last four to eight months. And most of that intensive work would be done in the first two to three months of construction when they're building the access road, delivering equipment, and setting the posts in the ground. Once that work is completed, the remainder is electrical. Once that work is completed, the remainder is electrical wiring, which is less intensive, and only a few electrical engineers would be on site to do that work. And our plan would be to construct all three projects at the same time, to not have it as phased out where we do one, one year and another the next, so they'd be hopefully at one time. And we can determine that based on they're being permitted altogether, as well as interconnection, they're all in the same timeline.
And so how long would it take from the, the theoretically beginning in fall of 26 till your operation?
I would say Q2 or Q3 of 2027.
Okay, with regard to the Lee County Ordinance Required Site Plan, are all participating residents shown on the site plan?
Yes, there are none.
How about the location of all non-participating residences?
Yes, they're shown as the black boxes with the one hundred and fifty-foot setback.
And how many of those are there?
Um, adjacent, there's technically two that are directly adjacent, but we're showing more than that within a thousand feet.
And there's their identification of, on the site plan, of adjoining property owners? Adjoining properties and their owners?
Yes.
Can you draw a distinction between the existing and proposed overhead transmission lines that are both marked OH?
Yes, so the existing line is that, that's located on the north side of the site plan, and it's ComEd's existing infrastructure that is already currently there. And then our pole lineup has that, the arrows, that kind of looks like a, there's five different arrows there for the different poles that we would put in to interconnect. And then there's the red MV line that across all three of the site plans, show it with the access road, and that's underground wiring next to the access road.
So both the existing and the proposed overhead transmission lines are both marked OH?
Um, I believe the other, the MV run that I mentioned is marked MV run.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and how is the electric cabling to the substation?
That's in the vicinity map, shown as the existing route on ComEd's infrastructure.
Are there, are, is shown any surface or subsurface drainage structures on the project site?
We have depicted the drainage swear, swale that goes through the center of the site. That is the only thing on site.
Um, so, so you're, you're saying there are no subsurface drainage tiles?
Oh, oh, drain tiles?
Subsurface drainage structures.
Gotcha.
Surface or subsurface?
So we have not conducted a drain tile survey yet, and we would provide that prior to submitting for a building permit.
And how would you locate drainage tiles?
We get a third party, usually Huddle Student Bride, we have a proposal out with them right now to execute. They go to site and they're able to tell based on the topography of the site where drain tiles likely are. They do digging investigations to verify where the drain tiles are, and they make a map to show that.
Is, is noted anywhere the presence or absence of occupied community buildings?
There are none.
How about the presence of public access roads and their turnout locations?
There are none, but we do show our proposed access road.
Would your access road be public?
No.
Open to the public? How about the presence or absence of any operation, O and M buildings?
None.
How about the presence or absence of scenic or natural areas within fifteen feet? Fif- now fifteen hundred feet?
Uh, there are none other than the Rock Island River to the north, which is shown on the site plan page at the end of the site plan section in the application.
And how about the presence or absence of any flood planes within the project or adjacent area?
There are none.
Where's the Lee County Ordinance Required Topographical Map?
It is shown on the site plan.
And? Does that show contour lines?
Yes.
Are they contour lines marked?
Yes, you kind of have to look closely. It's probably easier on the larger blowups that I brought, but they have the elevations listed on there. And it varies between six hundred and fifty-eight feet and seven twenty.
Would you say the road is the, are the distrib- the point of interconnection to the distribution lines, north side of Rock Island?
The northern side.
The, you show on the site plan apparently fifty-foot-high utility poles that should be required to put in probably by ComEd on the northern boundary. What would they, what material would they be?
Wooden.
Sort of like what we used to call telephone poles?
Correct.
How far apart spaced?
So the fifty that's located on the site plan is actually for fifty off-center, so that's how far they're spaced apart. The actual size of the quote telephone pole would be about forty-five feet instead of fifty.
Okay. And how far apart?
Fifty.
Okay, I see, all right. And how would they be set into the ground?
So the hole is augered in the ground and the poles are set into them.
How deep?
About seven to eight feet.
And how would that pole be supported below ground?
So based on the geotechnical report, that's how they understand how deep a civil engineer would decide how deep those poles need to go. And then a pilot hole is augered and it's backfilled by guy wires and anchors if needed.
So no artificial support, other than earth?
Correct.
Uh, let's see, do you have a noise level report, or are you going to produce a noise level report?
Yes, so at our next meeting, we have invited a noise expert.
Fine, that's fine.
To come and testify. He'll also produce a report.
Would the proposed development, and, and if you don't know the answer to this question, I'm just going through the ordinance. Would the proposed development produce any air pollution during either operation or construction?
No emissions would be produced from the product during operation. However, we will be using construction vehicles during construction to construct the project, which would be general construction emissions from those vehicles.
Would any particulate matter containing a particle diameter larger than forty-four mic- microns be released?
No.
Would any smoke or particulate matter of density equal to or greater than number two on the Ringelman chart be released?
No.
Any, any plans you have during construction to minimize the dust that would occur from obvious activities?
Uh, water can be used to quell the dust as, as needed on site.
You make the conclusion in your application that the development would not smell, what is, what, what, what facts give you that conclusion?
So during operation, the projects do not produce any emissions and are composed of generic building materials such as glass, steel, aluminum, copper, et cetera. So the conclusion is based on these facts that those materials and its operation would therefore not smell.
And probably experience too, right?
Yes, I was at a site in April.
How about any odor during construction?
Trucks will be entering the site, which do produce exhaust that could potentially smell similar to any other vehicle that's on Rock Island Road, but that's all that I've accounted for.
But during operation?
No.
Would the construction or operations proposed project emit any electromagnetic radiation?
So there will be transformers on site, as well as for the southern project, the battery storage system, and these, that's on the equipment pads. These do not produce more EMFs than a transformer or school or a work, work building, so they're low frequency and do not have danger to human health, as well as not ionizing radiation, so cannot like alter DNA or any of that. So yes, but little.
Can you quantify it?
I cannot.
Uh, would they comply with current FCC regulations?
Yes.
If you know, would the electronic electromagnetic radiation degrade in the performance of any other electromagnetic radiators, receptors in the vicinity?
No.
Would the proposed facility produce any heat either during operation or in construction?
No.
Would the construction or operations project involve the use of any materials which would decompose by detonation?
No.
That includes the batteries?
Correct.
By the way, back to the batteries for a minute, I, I didn't, probably my thick head, but what's the, what's the difference between battery cabinets and battery, battery storage units?
Um, the containers.
Containers, that's it.
Yes, if I could have some IT help to go back to the battery storage slide, thank you. Um, it's, if you go, yep, keep going, oh, it's all, it's the other direction, right there. So this, page ten, shows the difference between cabinets and containers, and the container looks more like a shipping container, whereas the cabinets are kind of a smaller upright container.
Okay, I guess I understood that. Are you gonna use both, or just it's gonna be your choice at time of development which, which to use?
Choice at time of development based on what can be procured during our procurement stage for construction, prior to building permit.
And the batteries were, would you describe the batteries again, please?
Uh, which?
What kind of batteries?
Oh, lithium-ion phosphate batteries.
Do they have a life?
I do not know, but I will be bringing in a battery storage expert to the next meeting to.
Upset.
Give better testimony than I can.
Would the construction or operation of the proposed projects involve activities or storage of flammable and explosive materials?
No, there will be no storage of flammable or explosive materials.
Batteries are not, lithium-ion are not explosive, potentially?
They are not explosive. So if those comp- and again, we'll have an expert to give a better description than I will, but we have in the batteries, if they were to, you know, have a thermal event or something, it would burn, it wouldn't explode, and it would be contained to that single battery cell.
Thank you. Would the construction or operation of the facility involve any toxic or noxious materials?
No.
What safety and training and firefighting devices are planned to be in accordance with fire protection codes of the county and the state of Illinois?
So during our building permit process, we would submit SOGs and SOPs to the local fire department and different emergency agencies. On our site plan, we propose a NOX box on each of the project gates that all emergency personnel would have access to and have that code for that. And also during construction, we offer training on site to learn more about the project, what would be needed for any emergency services, that kind of thing.
Thank you. These are just ordinance requirements, so bear with me. Would the construction or operations proposed facility involve any of the following that are subject to Illinois statutes? Microorganism cultures, pesticides, biological products, hazardous substances, toxic substances, infections agents, material, material requiring notification to a local fire department, or any other uses activities or materials which are subject to county, state, or federal hazardous or related materials regulations?
No.
The present character of the land is, right now as we speak, is row crop, right?
Correct.
Are there any permanent structures presently located on the entire project parcel?
No.
By the way, what's the full name of Pivot Energy I see on the internet just called Pivot Energy? Is it Pivot Energy Inc., Pivot Energy Company?
Pivot Energy Inc.
How many, and, and if you said, I apologize for missing it, how many batteries do you propose? I'm, I'm sure it's a range, but how many batteries would there be?
So it's four to five cabinets, which is shown on the upper part, or one container worth.
Do you know how many that is?
I believe it's sixty-three.
Per, per cabinet?
Total.
Oh, sixty-three total?
Yeah.
Um, in your, in your application, you noted that the, I think the, I think the panels would be Sylfab Solar, and then you list a number of models. Do you know which of those models would be used?
Yes, it will be Sylfab five eighty watts.
Five, five eighty XM or?
Yeah, that one.
Thank you. The dimensions of those, of the panels, you have that? Couldn't find it on the.
I.
Height, width, depth?
I do not, but my pivot project engineer is here and he could testify to that.
And you, if I understood your testimony, you've, you've changed the proposed inverters from what's listed in your application, is that correct?
Uh, so CPS is the chint power inverters.
Oh, that stands for, okay.
Yeah, sorry, they're synonymous. And those are for the two projects, it's the one twenty-five.
And then you said the other one?
Yes, and that's for the battery storage project.
Does the site plan, and again, we only had to deal with very small site plans at the time, show the location of seventy, of the some seventy-five inverters?
Um, they're located on the.
No, does it show it?
Yes, on the equipment pads.
So that's on the site plan?
Yes, so it, it points out to the equipment pads for the three different projects. I can point to it on this map if that's helpful.
See proposed location for transformers and electrical equipment?
That, that's it.
So it doesn't show the location of inverters?
Oh, the inverters are throughout the.
That's what's said.
Sorry, inverters are throughout the array.
But they're not shown?
Correct.
When you wrote in your application about buried electrical wires and lines, what is meant by the limiting phrase "to the greatest extent possible"?
So as in accordance with the AMA, we like to bury as much as we can at their certain depths listed. So along the access road is where it will be completely buried, but then between the panels and under. But then between the panels and underneath, we like to use a CAB system, it's called, so that it's all connected between the array rows.
I've heard that term before. What's CAB system stand for?
It's the Cable Management System.
CBM, is there another word for it?
Yeah, I think so.
Which of the, in the, are you testifying as decommissioning plan or are you going to have another witness do that?
I can speak to it as well.
In the application, there are two statements. That when decommissioning came, you would remove all below grade equipment. Or you would, all equipment would be removed to a depth of at least five feet, which is accurate.
So the all equipment to be removed is more accurate, but the to a depth of five feet is what's listed in the AMA. So we will, we don't go further usually than five feet for all of our equipment, other than the posts, which we remove entirely. So it's more proper to say all equipment.
Oh, at one point in the application, you said that the modules would never exceed or not exceed 12 feet in height, but another would not exceed 14 feet in height, which is correct.
The general preference is for 14 feet max to allow for flexibility for varying post heights depending on the undulation of the site to avoid and minimize our grading requirements. However, we will comply with the maximum, be below the maximum 20 foot in the Lee County ordinance.
Not being familiar with the term, and maybe some folks in here are, what's a game fence?
If you go to the IT for support, if you go to the second to last page, it's right, the next one, that one. I think this shows it well on page 19. This is an agricultural style fence. It's a wire mesh fencing instead of a chain link fence.
Does that in your, excuse me, let me try that again. Would you agree that in the DNR recommendations, they suggest you use a particular type of fencing to allow movement of wildlife?
Correct, this is that fence.
Is that something you will, is that that fence and is that something you will do?
Yes, it's graded mesh as they recommend.
Can you explain the difference in the application that where in one part it said the project fencing would be eight feet, eight foot tall, but another would be minimum of six feet?
Eight foot is our typical proposed fence height. Six is the minimum per NESC standards.
But if the county board wants to know how high your fencing is going to be, what's it going to be?
Eight feet.
We're getting there. Are there any platted subdivisions within a quarter mile of the boundary of the proposed development?
Yes, to the west.
How close is that?
The nearest residence is 170 feet from the array.
Nearest residence in the subdivision?
Correct.
The access road, can you describe its construction?
Yes, so they will remove eight to 12 inches of the top soil for where the access road will be placed.
How much?
Eight to 12 inches. And then it's compacted and they put down a geotextile fabric with crushed aggregate on top.
You know the specs of the aggregate?
Yes, I believe it's six.
I doubt six.
Yes, but I can have my engineers verify that in their testimony.
Exhibit H, Exhibit H, if I can find it. In your application, Exhibit H. Where on either of those engineering transmissions does it show the, does it bear the engineer's seal, signature, and license expiration date?
It should be on page two.
Page two. Page, going backwards?
No, um, you flip that page over, I'm trying to see what you're looking for. All right, so it must have not printed out when printing, it must have been on top of it, but the digital copy does have the seal.
And you understand that's required by the ordinance?
Correct.
Are you going to submit that then in future sessions?
Yep.
Is there any evidence that not only have you shared with the site plan with Chief Jostrom, but you provided him with the SOPs and SOGs?
We provided him with the site plan, however, we would provide the SOP and SOGs before building permit. Usually our EPC has a hand in creating that.
Would the petitioners provide training to local emergency response authorities on an annual basis?
We provide it during construction, but we can also revisit with the chief to see when is necessary because the training doesn't change. So if they need it year to year, it will stay the same, so we can converse with him about that.
Trying to be smart. Will the petitioners provide training to local emergency response authorities on an annual basis?
During construction, not usually every year.
Any hazardous waste created by the developments, construction, or operation?
No.
And so you're saying the only public utilities required by the development would be the connection to come in?
Correct.
And of course, in an emergency, although they're not public utilities, you would require probably public emergency response?
Correct.
How many workers would be traveling to the site during construction?
Depends on the day, but it can be?
Then give me a range.
Around 50 is the total to be employed by the project.
So the 50 max would be the fair statement?
Correct.
And how would they go to the site?
Usually in trucks and carpool, and they park on site either on the road or in the lay down area.
When you say, how many vehicles would you guess would be traveling? I guess is wrong, estimate would be traveling to this project site?
Between five and 10.
And where would they park?
Are these employee trucks or do you mean semi trucks?
No, employee.
They would park on the access road or in the lay down area where we're putting our panels.
So inside the project?
Correct.
Not along Atkinson Road or Rock Island?
No.
How about how many, like again, estimating how many larger vehicles, semis, flatbeds would be arriving per day during the construction?
Usually around five per week.
All right, during operation, how many vehicles would be traveling to the site?
About two to four times per year. Or, sorry, four to eight is more accurate.
Four to eight vehicles?
Oh, probably one vehicle four to eight times per year.
Yeah, okay. How many local jobs would the projects create?
Approximately 50 for construction.
So you intend to try your best to hire locally?
Yes, we've also already communicated with the local IBW about these projects. We had a meeting with the, one of the managers of development. So we've already started that, so they'd be included in the bidding process.
They would, but they would be given preference?
I don't know if it'd be preference, but they would be able to bid and be competitive.
All right. Do you, on behalf of these three petitioners, promise to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the county of Lee, its officers, appointed and elected officials, employees, attorneys, engineers, agents, collectively and individually called the indemnified parties, from and against any and all claims, demands, losses, suits, causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses, and liabilities whatsoever, including reasonable attorney's fees relating to or arising out of the issuance of the special use permits or the construction, operation, maintenance, and removal of the commercial solar energy facility, including without limitation liability for property damage or personal injury, including death or illness, whether said liability is premised on contract or in tort, including without limitation strict liability or negligence, or any acts or omissions of the applicant, the owner, or the operator under this section or the special use permit, except to extent any such claims, demands, losses, suits, causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses, and liabilities arise from the negligence or intentional acts of such indemnified parties?
Yes.
Do the petitioners declare to be bound by any and all proposals, promises, statements, and representations in its application materials for a special use permit or made under oath at this public hearing before the Lee County ZBA, even if not expressly specified herein or therein, and that you'd be similarly, and that written and binding provisions would be made that any successors and interest would be similarly bound?
Yes.
Forgot to ask, would there be any vibrations emanating from the proposed development?
Not during operation. During construction, when they pound the posts in, there could be potential for a little vibration during that time.
Okay. You're done with me. Let's take a break.
Wait a minute.
Oh, questions, I'm sorry. I thought I gave Zoomers a chance, but questions?
Well, you got one up on the board there.
Sure, sure. Sir, I can't identify who. Wolford household, do you have a question as witness?
Yes, I do. Sorry, if you can't take these questions, that's fine. I totally understand. Just cut it.
Ma'am?
So I mean, if you need to go on, you can, or I can?
You're cutting in and out. I only understood about half of what you said.
I understand you said earlier that we could ask questions. I hesitated because I just wasn't sure if I wanted to ask or anything I wanted to know. So if you need to take a break, you can, and I can ask later. It's totally up to you.
No, go ahead and ask your questions. I thought I gave you a chance before, but I don't want to cut you off.
Could she state her name for the record, please?
Yep. Just, let's get started with your name.
I'm Jordan Wolford. I have met.
Just state your name.
I've met with Merrill. My name is Jordan Wolford.
All right.
Jordan Wolford.
Where, please don't interrupt me. What, where do you live?
My family owns the house. It's 170 feet from this project.
All right, and is that in a subdivision that's your adjacent to the project?
Yes, it's to the west of it, like Ms. Reed said.
And you're then the closest house to the proposed project, is that right?
Correct.
All right, go ahead and ask your questions of her one at a time and give her a chance to answer.
Okay, so first question is, you talked about the, you're going to add all of like plants and the bees and everything like that. What happens if like us, family, or somebody who are potential by this place is allergic to something there that you guys are bringing in basically versus what's wildlife there now that we don't have any type of issues with?
So if you don't have any issues with the current natural wildlife, I would not imagine you would have issues with the pollinators or the sheep?
Okay, so like what are the bees and everything like that, like happens if someone is allergic to bees? That house and you're bringing beekeepers in and stuff like that over there?
Yes, good question. Thank you for letting me clarify. We are not doing beekeeping on site. So the bees would just naturally be going through the site. And there are pollinator friendly grasses that they can, you know, jump from, but they'll be not brought in. It's just natural wildlife.
Okay, I mean, would you guys even think about doing like a stipend to pay for guards to be sprayed with all the extra insects that are going to be coming with the wildlife that like the sheep that are becoming in, not just wildlife. We have deer all the time and pheasants and stuff like that, but now you're going to be bringing in sheep within, you said, I believe it said, I wrote down one to two years after the seed is planted, basically?
Ma'am, I'm not sure I understand where the question is. Just ask a question, please.
I guess I will skip that question then. We talked about, somebody asked, like one of the board members had asked about how the, how the sheep are going to be kept in, is this fence that you talked about is going to be eight foot, is that going around in front? That's going to run with Rock Island Road to then to keep all the sheep in, or are they going to be just be able to walk around and go wherever?
Yes, so each of the three projects will be fully enclosed by an eight foot game fence. So they will not be free.
Now, have you had from prior, with the sheep in there from prior people, is there any type of smell due to the fact now you're going to have sheep over there? Like with like the smell of like manure type or just anything like that that's going to, that we can foresee in the future for this?
I have not heard reports of any complaints of sheep grazing on our sites. I was at one of our projects two months ago or in April, and there were sheep on site and I did not notice an odor.
Okay, that's really all the questions I had right now. Just we've had this home for almost 55 years.
All right, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a break and come back and, now let's make it 8:30. Assuming that clock's correct. Off the record. I'm look, I'll be looking at, remember available dates, that's what I, another way I can do it. All right. Hmm, Ms. Reed, you want to back on the record and call your next witness? Oh, I see.
Uh, hello. Um, I am calling my next witness, Thomas Bach from HBK Engineering. He is the civil third-party engineer.
Let him explain that, just call.
Okay, great.
Great.
Welcome, Tom.
Sir, you want to raise your hand, do you solemnly swear, or affirm the testimony about to give you the truth, oh, truth, not the truth? Have a seat. Make sure the microphone's on, and are you going to be asking them questions, Ms. Reed? Or do you want me to try and move it along? Do you want me to ask them questions, or do you want to do it? Okay. State your name, please.
Uh, Thomas Bach, Tom Bach.
If you'll, uh, it, it's, it's difficult, I know, but if you're talking to the microphone, it helps, it particularly helps on Zoom, on, for the zoomers.
Tom Bach.
And would you sp, uh, just a minute here. Would you spell, please, in a minute, your last name?
B O C K.
And, uh, Mr. Bach, or what, what profession do you hold, professional licenses do you hold?
I'm a P civil en, uh, civil engineer.
Would you highlight your education, please?
Sure, I have a bachelor in science, bachelor of science in civil engineering from Marquette University with, uh, water resources emphasis. Nineteen ninety-six.
Um, okay, and your work experience since then, just in general, you don't have to go year by year, but.
Sure, eighteen years' experience, civil site development, um, commercial, uh, civil site development, uh, redevelopment projects, more recently, solar development, uh, EV charging stations, substation expansions, um, all aspects of civil engineering, including stormwater management, erosion control. Uh, I also get involved a little bit with land surveying, I'm not a land surveyor, but I manage land surveying projects.
And would, um, are you an employee of Pivot Energy or another entity?
I'm a senior project manager with HBK Engineering.
Senior project manager. Say the entity again.
H B K Engineering.
And where are they located?
Uh, headquartered in Chicago, I work out of our twenty-one oh one West Carroll office, also in Chicago.
And has, uh, uh, HBK Engineering contracted with Pivot Energy entities to, uh, do some kind of engineering for their proposed projects here in Nelson Township, Lee County?
Yes.
And what, what, what did you agree to do, what, not you personally, but what did HBK agree, agreed to do for Pivot Energy?
At this point, we're providing ALTA land survey services, critical issues analysis services, and now some, uh, preliminary engineering design services.
I take it you, there's some kind of presentation you want to give us a, correct?
Yes, very brief.
And, um, does that presentation, uh, is a hard copy of that presentation, uh, what's marked as petition number five?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay.
The slide is also, excuse me, um, they should be at the end of the.
Well, let me, let me, just, um, Mr. Jonathan, do you have his thumb draw, is it in your? All right, why don't you pull up page number one, if you would, Jonathan, and, and you can go ahead, Mr. Bach.
Next slide, please. So we covered some of this, my name is Tom Bach, I'm a senior project manager at HBK Engineering, I'm a civil engineer. Um, currently, my Illinois-related experience relevant currently is I'm managing about eighty-five Illinois community solar projects at various stages, so some are just surveying in due diligence, others design, others close out and as-built, uh, stages. Um, scope includes ALTA surveys, civil engineering, stormwater management, erosion control, uh, permitting, decommission, record survey, and as-bills, so across the board of various stages of solar projects.
And for what are you here today, did, what subject matter are you here today to talk about?
Stormwater and decommissioning.
Okay.
Slide, please?
Go ahead, yeah.
So HBK Engineering, we're a consulting firm based out of Chicago, we're a rather large firm, we have almost twenty offices now across the US, I think we're six hundred and fifty or so employees. Uh, multidisciplinary firm, civil engineering survey, electrical engineering, uh, telecommunications, so we're heavily in the utility infrastructure space. We're also a subsidiary of Kiwanis Services Incorporated, they're a national Fortune five hundred construction company, mostly working in the heavy civil and utility space. So that's my background as well. Um, slide, please. So stormwater here, uh, just want to talk a little bit about the stormwater on the project. So this specific site in this specific project, our intent is to minimize what's called hydrolog, hydrologically disturbed areas. Well, hydrologically disturbed area is where you change the contour or characteristic of the existing ground, which thereby changes the drainage characteristics in terms of runoff or flow from the site. So you alter the ground, you alter the stormwater characteristics of the site. So we aim to minimize that, in this case, by minimizing cut-and-fill grading, uh, ma, and maintaining the existing topography. As was testified earlier, most of the panels will be mounted on the ground in the condition as it is, it should not require grading to adjust the contour of the land. So the site improvements essentially follow the existing contour of the land. So there'd be a minor, excuse me, a minor amount of new impervious area, so impervious area is water that, uh, is, area that would repel water versus pervious would absorb water. Uh, so there's a minor amount of new impervious area associated with the project, generally related to the gravel driveway, uh, the equipment area, and concrete pads for equipment, transformers, switchboards. So it's a relatively minimal amount of new impervious area. With that said, what that does is that helps maintain the existing drainage pathway. So as the water currently flows through the property, we'll maintain that. The swales that are there will be maintained, essentially the way the water flows through the project, we aim to preserve that, um, and not alter that, thereby not, there's minimizing the hydrologically disturbed area of the project. So we'll also, when we go to building permit stage on this project, prepare a full stormwater management report, uh, including calculations, where we will calculate flows, um, from the site, both in the existing and proposed conditions, so we'll analyze the site as it is, and then as post-development after construction. So even though at this point we have not completed those calculations, our experience and history shows us that what we will look to demonstrate is a no negative impact as a result of our, uh, analysis. Um, and that will be accompanied with a full stormwater report, calculations, and plans at the time of building permit submittal to the county. Also, I had a brief conversation with, uh, the county engineer, David Anderson, about, um, a month ago, um, March, about March of this year, um, where we discussed the stormwater specifically to this project, the ordinance, and then we discussed our approach, um, just to kind of let them know how we were planning to approach the site, that we would submit a stormwater calculation report, and they seemed to, he seemed to be in agreement with our approach. So we already had that conversation to introduce the project. Slide, please? Thank you. Little more about the actual s, uh, site stormwater runoff, so the existing site as it is, um, as was mentioned previously, is farming of row crops. So row crops, um, have a mid-to-high runoff value, meaning water, stormwater that falls on the site, um, with the use of row crops, actually has a pretty high runoff value, uh, mostly due to the fact that the spacing between the rows, um, there tends to be, uh, quite a bit of bare earth that is, um, shown, even. is shown even when the crops are up. And especially when, during the winter, when the field is fallow, there could be corn stubble during planting and harvest. So there's a lot of time when that bare earth is present. And as we've seen, there's, that could create a potential for dust, sediment transport, and that has a high runoff value. So with the proposed site, as was discussed, the area will be seeded with this native deep-rooted plantings, pollinator grasses, which creates a very dense coverage of vegetative matter on the site, deep roots, helps to stabilize the soil. The roots are very deep, so they're not shallow-rooted. They'll go very deep and hold the soil. The calculations should also demonstrate that that ground cover characteristic retains the water during a rain event much more than, say, a use of a row crop. So in essence, we will probably be looking at a reduction in peak stormwater runoff in the post-developed site, vegetated with the native grasses versus the current site. And that will meet the ordinance, is that we will create no negative impact, we'll have less runoff, our calculations will show less runoff after the project than currently. Also, just of note, because we'll have less runoff and flow from the project, we would assume that stormwater detention ponds would prove to not be necessary. Reason you would have a stormwater detention pond would be to offset any kind of increased flow and runoff from a project. So in this case, if we are the same or less, we would not have stormwater detention ponds, which in this case is actually less disturbance of the native soil, the native soil and the native topography. Next slide, please. So we've also prepared a decommissioning plan. The decommissioning plan is outlining activities required to restore the site to a stabilized meadow condition, so not returning it to a farmed condition, but a stabilized meadow condition. So this would be the same native plants in that condition in the event the project had to be deconstructed or decommissioned. The plan itself would be to remove, as was testified earlier, to remove all onsite solar electric systems, enclosures, cabling, components, roads, foundations, pilings, anything associated with the developed facility would be removed. And that is written in the plan, the approach in the decommissioning plan. The interconnection infrastructure, so the infrastructure we spoke about, which would be the pole lines that connect from the distribution lines adjacent to the project. So there's a, it'll be somewhere five or six poles that interconnect to the overhead wire along the road and then move into the site. Half of those poles are comm-ed owned or utility-owned. The rest are, would be pivot-owned. So as part of the deconstruction, we will remove the poles that are installed on our project. However, the utility would be responsible for removing their own poles. So it's just a little nuance I like to point out. When we prepare our estimates, we assume that disassembled materials could be salvaged or repurposed, which is, which factors into the decommissioning estimate in terms of decreasing those costs. The decommissioning plan itself, in terms of the narrative, the process, and the estimate are AMA compliant. So again, the objective being to restore the project and the topography to the natural state which existed immediately before the project. We would also supply that estimate, and then Pivot would work to supply, to submit and supply the surety associated with it. That's essentially my presentation.
All right. Questions, this witness? Let's start with you, Ms. Henkel.
None, thank you.
How about GBA, Mr. Forster?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Have you done any decommissioning of any projects yet?
So the decommissioning is an interesting topic, because there have, there have been very few projects that have actually been decommissioned. So the values in terms of the estimates vary widely. So we pull from a source of white papers, crew hour estimates on what it would take to decommission projects, same thing with the salvage values, estimating what they could be sold for scrap. So we, when you bulk the estimates, we tend to fall within the ranges that are given by white papers and studies. But there's actually very little evidence to the matter due to the fact that not many of these projects, these community solar projects, have been decommissioned thus far. So we, our intent is to provide the estimate, so the surety can be, the main goal is to have the surety in the event that the project needs to be actually decommissioned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Phelan?
None.
How about interested parties in the courtroom, sir? All right, how about on Zoom? I'll give you time again to ask questions. One person left. All right. So, Mr. Bach, the, the, the report that you produce on stormwater runoff is only, was, has not yet undergone technical analysis, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So it's, I'm sure you're good faith, professional opinion, but it's only an opinion at this point, not supported by any facts, is that correct?
Technically, yes. However, we do rely heavily on the ground cover characteristics being changed. That is, so it has not been characterized numerically, but we know that that characteristic change carries a lower runoff value. And we've seen that proven multiple times on these same types of projects in the past.
And the, that, the report, which will be based on more, for lack of a better word, scientific or mathematical data, would be produced when, by when?
That would be produced at the time full permitted civil drawings are prepared in conjunction with that, and that would be at the time of building permit submittal.
And that's the time at which you would ask the county engineer for his sign-off, is that correct?
We would submit a signed and sealed stormwater management report associated with the civil plans for review by the...
County engineer, correct?
County engineer, yes.
Okay. With regard to decommissioning, are you familiar with the details of that plan?
Yes.
All right. How were the costs and the, yeah, how can I put it? The credits and the debits figured in that plan?
So we use the current site plan to put together a list of all the elements of the site. We do a quantity takeoff, so we will count, for example, the number of panels and on down the line to create a quantity of all the components of the project. We then associate a associated cost, again, with the cost, it's an estimate and an opinion based on available white papers, any other internal data we have.
And for the uninitiated, I'm sorry to interrupt, but for the uninitiated, what are white papers?
This would be publications by national groups that describe decommissioning processes. There are support documents by industry leaders, providing these values.
Okay.
So then we add in, then we add in, we estimate contractor involvement, so contractor overhead profits. So those end up being all the positive charges. We also include site restoration costs. Those are a little easier to ascertain, cost per acre to restore the site. Then those end up being the expenditures. And then we estimate credits of being able to repurpose or resell panels, or scrap other elements of the project, like the wiring, the steel, or the transformers. It creates an offset.
And how do you do those estimates?
They're tabulated, so we tabulate all the costs, then we do all the subtractions.
The estimates of credit.
Same, that would be the same thing. So we're estimating a value of scrap, which would be by using online sources to estimate cost per pound of, say, wire, cost per pound of steel, and then panels, an assumed value that they would have based on what they are new and a percentage.
So you, so you use the internet to produce present market value of leftover materials, is that correct?
We, yes.
All right. Any further questions, this witness, Ms. Reed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Thank you. Well, we're reaching the witching hour, so I don't think there'll be any more evidence tonight, but we will take just a moment for a little scheduling business. First of all, I want to make sure that now that there's a, there's no elasticity in the number of board members, gentlemen, are all of you still on board for June 12th? Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
All right. I want to propose, I want to move to a next available date, and that, we've been working behind the scenes between Ms. Henkel, myself, the court reporter, trying to, and the courtroom availability, trying to find days when we were all on board. So let me give you at least the next proposed available date, Wednesday, June 26th. How is that one for you, Mr. Force? You said, you said Wednesday, June? Did I say 26th? I'm sorry. I apologize. Wednesday, June 25th. How's that for you, Mr. Forster?
That's fine for me.
Ms. Henkel, the courtroom's available?
Yes.
How's that for you, Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
And I'm just going to make sure, Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Still no state attorney on Zoom, right? Well, we just can't have to go with it. Ms. Reed, you and your contingent that day? Oh. Okay. Well, now we got a problem. We're going to have to solve that problem with a bunch of going back and forth, so I'm going to recess this hearing until Thursday, June 12th, at beginning at 6:30, still okay with you guys?
Yes.
We're going to have to come up with some other dates. Okay. Is, let me ask you this, Ms. Reed. If I said the dates of June 26th, July 1st, and July 2nd, how would they be for you and yours? I'll say them again, June 26th, July 1st, July 2nd. But not the 26th? Okay. All right. Thanks. We'll work on those. Okay. That's it. 6:30, June 12th, Thursday, here, Lee County Courthouse, be there or be square. Off the record now.